Prayer, I'll read it by Mr. Johnson.
Oh, here it is, ma'am. Hallelujah, Father, we come at this hour thanking you for all your blessings you have bestowed on each and every one of us on the sound of our voice. Father, ask you to bless every household that's represented here tonight. Keep us in your keeping. And, Father, crown every elected official head with wisdom, knowledge, and understanding of the business at hand. Bless us, keep us, and protect us. These are our blessings. We thank you in your darling and son Jesus' name. Amen.
Let us pause for a moment of silence, please, for C.E.O. Hubbard, the father of Jacqueline Higginbotham of the Bastrop Police Department, and Robert Dunn, retired Bastrop Public Works. Thank you.
Salute.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, and I wish to welcome you to this meeting of the mayor and board of aldermen. Ms. Goldman, roll call to determine a quorum.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Nathan?
Mr. Armstrong?
Here.
Mr. Locke?
Here.
I'll present, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Goldman. I have just a few announcements that I would like to make. We realize this is early voting week, and I urge the citizens to exercise their right to vote. And voting day is forthcoming, so please be sure that you exercise that right. The forum, the public information forum that the city of Bastrop conducted a couple of weeks ago is now up on the website. We had some technical difficulties, but for those of you who missed the live forum here in the city hall, you can pull it up on the Bastrop City site. We will leave it up for, up until the election day, and then we will take it down. We have a retirement reception for Terry Bowen, Curtis Stevenson, and Sarah Coleman Friday, tomorrow, at 11 o'clock. The police department, the public is cordially invited to come and wish these officers well in their retirement and their future endeavors. Also, at 11 a.m., the auction, no, I take that back, 10 o'clock Saturday morning. The city will have our auction. Ms. Goldman, you want to talk about that a little bit?
Yes, ma'am. This is items that was declared surplus and no longer needed. We're also joining with the Morehouse Parish Sheriff's Office. They're also joining with us, and we hope to have a good crowd. It's going to be at the city garage at 10 o'clock, and we welcome everybody. Come see.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Goldman. We've been doing spring cleaning in October here at the city hall. Also, coming up on Monday, October 24th, 10 a.m., the city will sponsor a memorial service for former Mayor John Bond. His daughter will be here, I believe, his, how many grandchildren? His grandchildren will be in attendance. In fact, we waited to plan this event around their schedule, so the public is invited to attend as we celebrate the life, the legacy, and accomplishments of former Mayor Bond, who truly had a passion for this community. Fall cleanup, free dumpsters at vacant lots, just kind of notice the signs where they are. Mr. McKee, you want to talk about that a little bit, since that's coming up? We certainly appreciate the efforts of the Keep Morehouse Beautiful group.
The dumpsters, there should be five dumpsters located at Bayou Custom, which we might refer to, and people might remember, as the old Tidewater building on West Madison, just before you get to the city limits. And we're asking that you bring all your trash, debris, leaves, limbs, to those dumpsters. There will be a place also set to take your old tires to. You, we ask that you do not put them in the dumpsters because we have to sort them out. We can't dump them in the same place. There'll be some, a place for, put your tires for tire recycling. The city will also be cleaning up some of its property and also some of the areas where we've had some illegal dumping. We're going to take this opportunity to clean up as much as we can. Will there be any questions?
How many tires can you bring, Mr. McKee?
You can bring three tires per individual.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKee. Which Way to Main Street from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., October 31st, and the Arts and Crafts, Saturday, November the 5th. So let us come out and support these two events. We had this week Fire Prevention Chief Montgomery. You want to come and speak to that? It's, it's really been a heartwarming experience. I've been out in the schools because some of the schools have recognized community helpers, and was out with the chief of police and the fire chief today at a school. And it warms your heart to know that you're reaching into the hearts of children. Chief Montgomery?
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Thank y'all for the opportunity to speak to you. As we, as the mayor stated, this week is Fire Prevention Week. We have been out to all of the elementary schools in the parish, in the city, saw them in the parish, talked to the kids about the importance of fire safety. Also, we've been trying to reiterate to the public that we still have our smoke detector program going. So anybody that's in need of a smoke detector, we won't turn them down. All they got to do is just get in contact with us, and we'll be willing to give them one, and if they need, then we will come out and install it. Anybody have any question?
Are there any questions for the chief? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Chief Black, did you want to speak to any updates you have in the police department? I know you've got some reporting to do on some grant information, and also, the police department staff members have been working very hard to solve crimes, and, Chief?
The grants you're talking about would be for the USDA?
The grant, I sent you an email on, I know we've got an update to do on that.
Yes, we completed that. We completed all our reporting that we wanted to do on the grants that we currently have. We're working on a USDA grant for cars, and went to the schools today with the mayor, and the kids were real excited about seeing everyone there playing with a fire truck, working with water hose. Trick or treating this year, which will be immediately following Which Way to Main Street, 6 to 9, October 31st.
Okay. Thank you, Chief Black. Today was one of those opportunities you take advantage of to be proactive and to shape the ideas of children, to teach them that it's important to prevent a fire as much as it is to put it out, and to focus also on that end of law enforcement to stop a crime that you hope you never have to solve. And I was thinking also how we have coordinated with the school system this year, and we have seen positive changes, and we are preparing for our celebration to show the accomplishments that the city has made in the last couple of years under these stressful economic times. We partnered with the school system on truancy. While we were unable to dedicate an officer, we, all of our officers are aiding with fighting truancy, and the chief is well aware of that, and he has informed the staff. School system has reported that they did see an appreciable drop in truancy. We also partnered with the school system on bullying, and feel good about being able to launch that project over a year ago. So we work with agencies, even though they have to take the lead in what their goal and what their endeavor is. We received a letter from the United States Environmental Protection Agency. Under Mayor Hawkins' administration, he had applied for some grant money in 2008, and unfortunately, we will not be getting that grant, but it does not keep us from continuing to make application. But I wanted to give you that update, that sometimes it takes a very long time before you get a response, and when you look at that in 2008, and this is 2011, and we're just getting a response on that one. And also, a second grant that goes hand in hand with that. I don't think I have it with me right now, but we have submitted two grants, as I indicated, on trying to get the sewer plant moved. So it may take a while, but just trust that we are continuing to do our work. It's very unfortunate, the announcement that we received from Georgia Pacific. About 27% of the employees out of that 700 at Georgia Pacific live in and around this community, and I have been in touch with the Georgia Pacific people, and they have put the city of Bastrop on their mailing list to keep our citizens informed of the next steps. And they will be hosting a work fair Thursday, October 20th, 2011, from 9 a.m. to 5 p.m. The location will be First Baptist Church, Multi-Ministry Center, 703 Pine Street in Croset, Arkansas. So you might want to mark your calendars. Those of you who are in the listening audience who are affected by this, I'm sure those who are directly affected will be getting some communication. But I did offer the Bastrop Municipal Center to them, in that we have that many employees in this area, and they told me they would stay in touch with me. The fair is coming up. Kids' Day is set for Saturday, October 22nd. Chief, we are prepared, staff-wise, for what we have to do for the fair? Okay. Thank you. And that covers all of my announcements. Are there any other announcements from council members?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Item number four, public comments as they relate to items on the agenda. Are there any public comments? Yes, sir.
What date is you making for the fair?
Okay, October 22nd is Kids' Day, and the actual beginning date will be what, Mr. Fair?
It opens on the 19th.
Oh, the 19th. The fair, okay. The fair opens on the 19th of this month, with Kids' Day being on the 22nd. Thank you for that observation. Okay. Public comments as they relate to items on the agenda. Are there any public comments? Item number five, at this time, I will approve the previous minutes, September 8th, 2011, regular meeting, and September 22nd, 2011, special meeting. I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, make that a motion.
Properly moved by Mr. Johnson.
Second.
And second by Mr. Nathan. That was you, Mr. Nathan?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, Finance Committee Report Resolution 111406, Bills and Claims for the Month of September 2011. Mr. Locke?
Mayor, I move for the acceptance of Resolution Number 111406, Bills and Claims for the Month of September 2011.
Second.
Okay. Properly moved by Mr. Locke, and second by Mr. Moore. Are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, Appoint a member to the Bastrop Historic Commission, Carl Davis of Edward Jones. Is Mr. Davis here? Would you come and introduce yourself?
I appreciate you putting me early on the agenda because I've got another engagement at 7 o'clock, but I've operated a business here on the Courthouse Square for over 20 years, and I'm pleased to be asked to lend whatever input I can to the commission.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your contribution to public service.
Thank you.
At this time, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion, Mayor. Second.
Properly moved by Mr. Moore, and second by Mr. Locke. Are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. We look forward to working with you. Item number eight, Resolution 111404, Commanding Sarah Coleman Upon Retirement as Sergeant of the Bastrop Police Department. Ms. Goldman, I believe I have a certificate. Will you have the resolution?
I do, but we have to sign. I will give them to you tomorrow.
Okay. Do you want to express how much you miss us?
I'm not a speech giver, but I will say, I did write a little something down, because when you're overwhelmed by emotion, you tend to forget something, so I kind of jotted it down. First, I would like to thank God for watching over me and keeping me safe all these years. I'd like to thank the city of Bastrop for giving me a chance to spread my wings. To the citizens of Bastrop, I truly thank you for your support and all the support you showed me. Last but not least, I'd like to thank my friends, my coworkers, and my family. My father was in law enforcement, and one thing that sticks out in my mind, he always told me, you treat a person the way you want to be treated. And during my tenure at the police department, that's basically what I tried to do. So I want to say thank you to everyone, and I will always be pro-law enforcement. Thank you.
On behalf of the city of Bastrop, I want to express my appreciation and support from you the last two years, the last eight years on the city council, and I can honestly say everybody knows C.E.O.
Item number nine, Resolution 1114, oh, okay.
Let them make a motion.
I'll make the motion, Mayor, for the acceptance of Resolution 111404.
Okay.
I'm second, Mayor.
Properly moved and second. Are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number nine, Resolution 111407, Commanding Curtis Stevenson Upon Retirement as Captain of the Bastrop Police Department. Is Mr. Stevenson here? At this time, I will entertain a motion.
So move.
Properly moved.
Second.
And second. Are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Please remember the retirement reception tomorrow, recognizing these officers. I have nothing but appreciation for officers who are our first-line responders, along with the fire department, and also Mr. Terry Bowen. Item number 10, Mr. David Strange, Bastrop Partners, LP Summerlin Lane Apartments. Mr. Strange, if you'll come and introduce yourself, he has a presentation on a development that he is currently interested in pursuing in this community.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor, for having us over tonight and have an opportunity to speak with yourself and fellow board members, and, you know, hopefully show a little quick presentation on a development that we're proposing for here in Bastrop. And once we go through the presentation, I'd be happy to entertain any questions that anyone has. This presentation takes about 10 minutes, give or take, and my name is David Strange, and the company I'm with is called New Horizons Development, but in the course of the presentation, we have a screen that vets that issue a little bit further, and when I get to it, I'll do it at that time. All right. The development that we're proposing in Bastrop is a tax credit development, and it's a housing development, and one of the first things that I wanted to do was share with everyone on exactly what a tax credit development is. I think that that word is, thank you, is used oftentimes, without being really sure what it is. The Tax Reform Act of 1986 is the federal legislation which improved tax credits for housing. The fund is administered by the U.S. Department of the Treasury, and it's codified in Section 42 of the Internal Revenue Code. That's the basis of law which sets forth the administration of tax credits. And a tax credit development is just simply a housing development whose financing comes from the sale of tax credits in lieu of strictly going to the bank or some other place and borrowing the money. What tax credits are not, tax credit developments, they don't have anything to do with HUD, they have nothing to do with Section 8 housing, they have nothing to do with, you know, public housing authorities, public housing. There are some farmers' home developments in Bastrop, FHA developments, Section 512 developments, those are subsidized, more public-type housing developments. This is a, this is more of a, you know, we call it in our industry workforce housing finance mechanism that the Treasury administers. You know, how does it work? Each year, the federal government has a certain amount of tax credits that they allocate out to every state. The allocation is based upon the state's gross population. Starting back in 1986, each state then formed a state agency that got the tax credits and then would administer them on behalf of the federal government. The agency in Louisiana that administers the fund is called the Louisiana Housing Finance Agency. It's located in Baton Rouge. It's actually going to have a name change effective January 1st to the Louisiana Housing Corporation. It's going to have a different legislative oversight, but it will function exactly the same. And it's, every year, the LHFA, which is how that's abbreviated, they hold a competition amongst developers, developers from our state and other states, that come in and compete in a competitive process for a very limited number of tax credits. As you can see, this year, we had 96 applications submitted for tax credits for developments, and this year's a little unique. They've kind of combined two years' worth of credits, so there's enough money out there to finance probably about 14 or 15 developments, depending on the end size of them. So it's a highly competitive process. On a normal year, it's more like 10 developments, and typically, you have more like 65 or 70 applicants, but this was a kind of a significant year. The state agency sends out a published program manual essentially every year that says, these are the rules to you developers, that we would like you to put together a theoretical application on if we gave you the money, where would you go and what would you do with it? And we're going to give you some criteria that we want to see you incorporate in that, and you give it back to us. It's kind of like a public RFQ process that, for these funds. What they use to kind of determine who the winners of the competition are is the first and most important thing is their census data that they're able to analyze to determine where the areas of greatest need for affordable housing. They also have an experience threshold for the developer, what's your proven track record, you know, what are you doing as far as excellence in construction and design standards? There's a real movement, you know, nationally, but particularly as it relates to this program, to incorporate green building standards, high-efficiency products, really lower bills, your utility bills and things like that. So you do that, and then this year, they asked for, what can you do? If we give you the money, how are you going to leverage that? Can you go take our money and get some other money and put it in a pot so you can really do something excellent? And the other thing this year that was new was they said, what about if you go find a project to build housing, and we give you the money to build housing, but you also use that money to remove blight? So go find some, don't just go find a raw piece of land out in the country. You know, we want something kind of in, you know, in the city where everyone has equal access to all the amenities the city has to offer, education, medical, that kind of stuff. And, and, you know, if you can find a property that has some blight on it, an abandoned house is obviously what naturally comes to mind, and bring that piece of property where you're going to tear down some old abandoned structures and then replace that with new housing, will really give you a good look. And so those were just some of the rules of the program this year that led us and how, go ahead, Amy, we conceived of our development. You know, how do tax credits work? I mean, what is a tax credit deal? You know, a typical tax credit deal in the state of Louisiana, we're generally capped at about $7 million on our proposal. Whatever you send us, make sure you're staying under about $7 million. That typically will allow you to do a development that will have about 48 housing units, once you have to put in all the infrastructure and the housing and everything else. So we send in an application saying that we need $7 million to build 48 housing units, which we're proposing, and I'll tell more about specifically the development we're proposing in Bastrop, but it's coincidentally 48 units. We said, look, we need $7 million in tax credits to build these 48 housing units, and if the state looks favorably on our application, they give us the $7 million in tax credits. Well, that's not money, it's just tax credit. So to turn it into money, we go to Wall Street and sell those. In this scenario, we would sell them to Chase Manhattan Bank, and Chase Manhattan Bank will say, tell you what, we'll give you 80 cents on the dollar for your tax credits. That's a huge benefit to Chase Manhattan Bank because they just got a $7 million tax savings they only had to pay 5.6 million dollars for. That's about where the market is today. Most large financial institutions, Exxon, companies like that, they'll pay you about 80 cents on the dollar. So we would go sell the tax credits and get 5.6 million dollars. Remember, we said our development was going to cost us 7 million to build, so we simply go to the bank and borrow the other 1.4. Who owns the development? The way that works is obviously, you know, once we sell those tax credits to Chase Manhattan to get the tax benefit, they own it. We're only a 1% owner, they end up being a 99% owner, so they can take all of the tax benefits. So you have a huge corporate ownership of, you know, this development that has all of its, you know, regulatory and auditing departments. You know, what's the catch? You know, I've got a $7 million development that I only had to go borrow 1.4 million dollars for, so I don't have this tremendous financial exposure. You know, why is the government doing that? And, you know, the reason is, they're going to say, I'll tell you what, we'll give you the tax credits to go help you finance this development if, when you are selecting people to live in these houses, apartments, duplexes, town, whatever it is you're building, the only thing you can't do is you can't have a resident that lives in there that makes more than 60% of the area median income, which in the case of Morehouse Parish is $55,000. So that would equate to all the residents that live in the development are making less than $55,000. That's the only caveat, that we want, if we're giving you this gift that is affordable housing, be sure that you're letting the people live there that are in need of affordable housing. We don't want, you know, the doctor or lawyer right out of school that just moved to town that's got a real good job at the hospital living here. That's not what it's for. And so we signed an agreement to the federal government through the state saying, we agree to do that, and we're audited on an annual basis, making sure that everyone that lives in one of our communities fits that criteria. Go ahead, Amy. Why does the government do this? You know, the program, like I said, has only been around since 86, and it really didn't take off until the 90s, because while they passed the law, Wall Street had to catch up with creating a market about tax credits. with creating a market about tax credits. And so, you know, they do it because there is a tremendous inventory of substandard, non-energy-efficient housing in the United States. We see abandoned, blighted housing all over the place. We see lots of people living in substandard housing that are not energy efficient, they don't have central air and heat, all this kind of stuff, and so the government recognizes that. We have an emergency class of house burden individuals, and that's simply, someone that's house burdened, it doesn't matter if you own your house or you rent where you live. If it takes more than 30% of your income to pay your mortgage or your rent, you're house burdened. And that's a real, you know, precarious position. It puts unfortunately a very large number of citizens in that, you know, where's the extra money to pay for things that, you know, food and cars and entertainment and, you know, when all your money's going to housing? So this is an opportunity for, you know, it's for people that are, you know, working. So if you're out there working hard and you're making $41,000 a year, but yet you're having to spend 12,000, 15,000 on your mortgage, that's putting you in a situation that, you know, we don't feel that you should be in. The subprime mortgage, you know, that failed when we were trying to force homeownership, or some streetless people were trying to force homeownership on people that perhaps were not in a position to do so, and this is a good transition vehicle for that. It forces large corporations to make investments in rural communities like this. I mean, that's why a Chase Manhattan Bank, you know, would come and make an investment in Bastrop is because they're getting a tax benefit from it. It creates jobs, particularly in construction-related services, and it provides affordable housing alternatives to, you know, the middle-class working folks that are the backbone of all of our communities. The rent structure, as it would relate to the specific project that we propose here, is based upon, again, the 55,000 median income number, and that equates to, in our formula, a one-bedroom apartment is $408, a two-bedroom is $493, and a three-bedroom is $573. That's about roughly 50 cents a square foot. If we built this, these houses or apartments conventionally, you know, it would be, you know, north of a dollar a square foot. So it's essentially cut in half of what any market rate would be. Go ahead, Amy. Who we are. As I mentioned, I'm with New Horizons Development. We're actually three companies. We're the development company, a construction company, and the management company. I have two partners, Lewis, Jerny, and George Provius. We've done over 15,000 housing units throughout the southeast. We've got a pretty big company. We have a good reputation. We've done developments not too far down the road from here. We've done one in Wensboro recently, and we've done a fantastic one in Alexandria that actually, as part of the original stimulus package, the federal government had the NSP program, and a few communities got NSP grants. The city of Alexandria applied for an NSP grant, which was a housing grant, and they chose us to be their partner, which was really the biggest one in the state, to come and do a housing development that they put the NSP money in. We went and got tax credits, sold them, put all that money together, and did a urban revitalization project right on the south side of downtown in Alexandria that we just finished up a couple of months ago, and it's really a beautiful development. It's not too far down the road. It is the exact development that we would be proposing to do here. The Bastrop Partners, which would be the owner, every time we do a development, it's not owned by New Horizon. We have to create this single-purpose entity so that Chase Manhattan can come in and own most of the partnership interest, so they get the tax benefit. And when we ran the public notice that we ran about the development over here in the newspaper, the name Chris Valzamakis was on there, and he would be the project manager, and what we do is for profit sharing in our company, we let the project manager have a very small ownership, so they feel part of the project that they're building, make sure that they do a good job in that part of it. Go ahead. One of the original sites that we looked at, if you go back just a little second, Amy, was the corner of Boswell and Nancy in town. It's got a large community green space there, and that's kind of a general footprint. Go to the next one. But this is what we're proposing to build. It'd be 48 units, and we call this our kind of townhouse look because we build them like townhouses where everyone's got their own private entrance, and you've got your own private balcony there. And so it looks more like a townhouse, but we get a little bit more economies in construction by having them in that, you know, a single roof. And they either come in four or eight plexes, and we have eight plexes that we propose in our program we put here. This is, we've built this same building, this same development, probably six or seven times, just in the last two or three years. We did a lot of work on the Mississippi Gulf Coast, Post Katrina, to rebuild the workforce housing down there. We were very successful in our efforts to get federal tax credits down there. This development is the same one we, this is actually in Waverun, Mississippi. You can see that all of our developments have a KeyCard access, and then there's what you can't see in the pictures when you come around the corner there, there's a big security gate. They're all completely gated. This is the one we just built in Alexandria. This is that same development again. We had built that in Biloxi. All of our developments have a computer lab in them that are for use by the residents. It's typically a footrace for the kids when they come home in the afternoon, see who gets the computer first to check emails and stuff, and it's all supervised. They have a swimming pool, they're completely fenced. We have a community park in all of our developments. The one we were proposing here had a pretty large, we got some extra, one of the things that gave extra consideration to this time was some type of, you know, health and wellness aspect, so we wanted to have a much larger community green space where people could go walk and play and be outside. Go ahead. We also do other things. I mean, we've done this in a three-story thing we did down in Biloxi, that we do elderly developments. That's an elderly development there. The project architect that has designed our things for us is Ferguson and Associates, and I guess we're in tiger country, but they did the stadium expansion at Ole Miss. Ours was already done. But they've done some big-time projects, very big-time regional architectural firm, and so they put a lot of thought and effort into designing some really high-tech energy efficiency units. Now, I apologize in fact, somebody else. The, as I mentioned, we had to incorporate green standards over the last several years. This will be a certified green gold community. That's almost unheard of, but, you know, to get to that, you have to go and have, whereas in a typical residential construction, you may have R-15 on wall insulation or something, we're up around R-30. I mean, you really have to do things to make these units so energy efficient that in the end, the energy consumption is 30 to 50% less per square foot than any other house that's being built today. It's all measured. We have tankless water heaters in everything that we build. Those are about $1,200 per unit. Each one of our, go ahead. This was a, you know, as I mentioned, we were kind of given the chore of finding sites that had some blight on them. One of the sites that we were originally looking at over off of Boswell Road here in town had this structure on it, and so it was one of the reasons that we were giving some consideration to this site is because, you know, we would remove that as part of the development, which, you know, obviously removes an eye sore and a safety hazard. You know, what are the benefits of these developments? In addition to providing obviously affordable housing, it's a source of tax revenue for local schools and public work. It creates jobs. One of the things that we are committed to is being partners with the communities that we develop in. And just down the road in Wensboro, for instance, we did a development about two years ago, and what we did is we ran an ad in the local newspaper for two weeks that anyone that could provide any kind of trade, supplier, service as it relates to construction, we rented the ballroom at the hotel there for two days and said, "Bring your resume, bring whatever it is that you have, because we want to spend money locally buying our supplies and trying to hire as many local people as we can to, you know, make this more of a community project." And, you know, like I say, when these developments are seven to seven and a half million dollars, that's a lot of local money spent. Go ahead. You know, it's not like other properties. Again, we have agreed to have 24-hour security. We, it's completely gated, the only way in is with KeyCard access. We have reserved a unit in the development for a law enforcement agent to live free of charge. That would be a local police officer, sheriff deputy, you know, someone that, if someone wants to live in our community, then we reserve that free of charge. You know, and what's different between a tax credit development and other developments, in particular multiple family developments, is the audits that we have to have every year, we're audited obviously by Chase Manhattan, the state of Louisiana, federal government audit. Everyone makes sure that everything that we're supposed to do, we're doing, and it's not just for resident profile, it's for the physical fitness of the development. It's, go back, Amy. It's such a great program, and this is in all sincerity, if they come do a physical file inspection and your smoke detectors, you want batteries out in one of them, they'll write you up, and then I would not be able to participate in the program next year. It's very competitive, and I don't want to miss out on a year of participating in this program. Obviously, it's how I make my living, but it's a, you know, they've got some hooks in you to make sure you're doing the right thing. And we have operating and replacement reserves that other developments don't have. And that simply means this, that from the get-go, we're regulated so that we have to maintain 5% operating, 5% replacement reserves, which simply means that we've got a couple hundred thousand dollars in the bank for operating and replacement on both, so let's say a half million dollars, so that if an air conditioner unit goes out, it's fixed that afternoon. And we have to maintain that balance for the life cycle of this development. So there's always a lot of money on hand to make sure that the property doesn't begin to deteriorate over time. There's funds in place there. And that's one of the problems, quite frankly, that we've seen in a lot of, you know, rental housing, whether it's someone that owns a house they're renting from you down the street, or it's a big apartment complex in a big city or whatever, they begin to deteriorate over time because, and this, when the government was drawing up this program, it's one of the things they recognized, and so they put this, you know, kind of stop safe in there to make sure that couldn't happen. There's always money there. Go ahead. And then we do criminal background checks and all of our things, you can go ahead, Amy. And on everyone that is a resident, extensive credit, extensive criminal, we have an absolute zero tolerance policy. And, you know, I was just showing that slide as evidence that, you know, as the further and further you get from your house, everyone likes to know their neighbors. When you're in the gates of our community, you know your neighbors, that they're, you know, there's not, there's a zero tolerance for anyone with any kind of criminal background. We are proposing to do this development here in town. The, we made an application to the LHFA, and we had the opportunity about two weeks ago to come present this same slideshow to the police jury, but what we didn't have at that time, which we now have, is two days ago, the state released their preliminary kind of ranking score of those 96 applications. And there's two things that jumped out at me, is you compete, there's one statewide where you compete against New Orleans, Baton Rouge, and things like that. That's the pool that we chose to compete in. There's another pool of rural towns that they have a little bit of money set aside for, but it's not nearly as much money, so we wanted to go for the larger pot of money. Long and the short of it is, the number-one rural-ranked project in the state was in Morehouse Parish, and the number-two ranked general development was in Morehouse Parish. What does that tell me? The state recognized there is a tremendous need for affordable housing in Morehouse Parish. It's been long neglected, and they intend to do something about it this year. So we're very excited as this process moves forward. You know, it was a preliminary analysis. They'll still go back and crunch some data, and we've still got to supply them with some different things. We've got to begin to kind of shore up a few things going forward. We're identifying some possible sites here in town to put the development on, but that's the development. I mean, whether it's on Street A or Street B, that's, we have committed in writing to do that. It's what we've built in every other city that we're in. We're excited about the opportunity to come here and work with the administration and provide what we think will be a fantastic asset to the community, and we hope to have an opportunity to, you know, get y'all's input and work with y'all in making this happen, because I think that it will be a tremendous asset to the community. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Strange, and thank you for your interest in the community. Council members, do you have any questions for Mr. Strange while he's at the podium?
Yes. The site, I noticed a couple of weeks it was on Somerville. Have you thought about another site, maybe on the west side somewhere?
We have, yes, sir. We're looking at some things right now. One of the things that we had to put in, you know, in our application was, we're not going to put our development out away from everything, that it has to be within two miles of amenities, like a doctor's office, a school, a library, post office, these kind of things. So we're out looking for those areas in town where we think that this would be a real compliment to the community that meets that criteria. We've looked at a few things. We're having our engineers look at a few things to make sure it's not in the flood zone, to make sure that public utilities and services are available. So we haven't, we have not proceeded forward with anything specifically, and I, you know, if anyone has anything to offer in that regard, I'm happy to listen.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Strange?
Yes, sir. I had a few. You said that some of the criteria were you were determined, determine the greatest area of need, blight, and being in the city.
No, sir.
That was part of your speech.
I didn't mean to say city, blight and need.
You used the word determine the areas of greatest need, blight, and located within the city. That was the three things you said.
Okay.
You didn't mean to say within the city?
No, sir, I did not mean to say.
Okay, because that's my point, number one, this is not in the city limits. How big an area are we talking about? How many acres?
I need about five, really, to get it done.
Okay, so that lot's over five acres?
That particular, it would be sufficient, yes, as it relates to size.
So that five acres of land, how much of that five acres of land has blight on it?
Tiny, it's a tiny little bit.
Right, just the one little area with the abandoned building. The rest of it's already a cleared lot.
Correct.
Because in my mind, we're talking about blight, we're talking about the whole lot being in blight. So I don't want people to misunderstand that they did not know that area. There's just one little bitty building in the corner.
Right.
Okay? And how did you come about that being a great area of need? Because there's already a couple of apartment complexes down the road, there's a nursing home, and there's a retirement apartment right on the other side. So how did you come upon this area of land?
I came upon that area of land just by contacting a local real estate broker, is one of the things that we initially looked at early on. But as far as the demographics are parish-wide, they're not really specifically located to, in a lot, I mean, in a lot of municipalities or areas, you have to be careful whichever you go in, because you have to be in what's known as a qualified census tract, you have to be in a couple of different federal entitlement areas, renewal communities, a hub zone, not HUD, but Hub. You can be in a difficult-to-develop area. There's all the, the more entitlement areas that you're in, the better your scoring is. The entirety of Morehouse Parish is in every one of those areas, so it doesn't matter. That's which, one of the unique characteristics about Morehouse.
Okay. And the last thing, I didn't quite care what you said. You said the median income is 55,000?
No, sir. Actually, I think the median income of Morehouse Parish is exceedingly low, probably 20-something thousand. But you can use the national median if you're in a rural community, which gets us up to, because there's no way this development would work, or any of these developments work in a rural community if you had to use the rural number.
But my part I misunderstood was the 60%. I didn't quite catch that. What did you say about that?
Well, we can base our thresholds of income level for a resident at 60% of 55,000, which is the national average, so I can do that math in my head, but what's that, upper 30s?
33, about 33,000.
Yeah, that's our number. Whereas if the actual area median income of Morehouse Parish is 20,000, 25,000, let's say, 60% of that gets you down to 50, you couldn't possibly afford to build that.
So they can't make more than $33,000 a year?
That's correct.
That's what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I need to know.
Yeah, appreciate it. Okay.
One more question.
Yes, sir.
Why did the police jury reject this project?
Oh, I don't know that they have rejected it. They, I mean, rejection's not the right word. I mean, I don't know they're in a position to reject or accept anything. I think that some citizens showed up when we did our presentation at the police jury and expressed concern, which I think was largely motivated by their just not understanding the program and what we were intending to develop and build. But as far as a rejection, I mean, you know, we, our application is with the state, not with the police jury. Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Strange?
I just want to make clear, you did say something about using local contractors, farmers, laborers in building this structure.
Yes, sir. But to clarify that, so there's no confusion, we will buy the supplies, like, for instance, the lumber and things like that, understanding that it's got to be green lumber. It's a green community, and, you know, I suspect there's a lumberyard here that carries green-certified lumber, but in the event they did, and I can't But in the event they did, and I can't represent, I'm going to buy the lumber here if the closest place that sells green lumber's in Monroe. We'd get it in Monroe. But to the extent that those products are available, we will. As far as labor and stuff like that, we try to come in and hire as many local laborers. We have our own construction company, so we won't sub it out to a bunch of little, you know, construction guys. There's a bonding requirement, so for a few of the trades, like the plumbing trade and things like that, in order for them to be able to post the requisite bonds for this program, there may or may not be someone here locally that could do that. We ran into that issue in Winsboro, and we ended up getting, I think, one or two of the, like, electrical, the big trades out of neighboring cities. But as far as, you know, general construction labor, brick labor, roofing, roofing materials, the insulation company, the painting, you know, that kind of stuff, we've got the capacity to do that. Did that answer your question?
Okay. Oh, I do appreciate that presentation, Mr. Strange. I've had several conversations with him, and as I appreciated, you are currently looking for a site to put your development on. And it is your desire to work in concert with the local municipality in a friendly manner, that this will be viewed as an asset to the community, wherever it ends up being. And I think it would be the position of the police jury to answer or to state what their objections are while you clarify to this council what you are attempting to accomplish.
Yes, ma'am. And the, this preliminary ranking, nothing becomes finalized until the end of December. So, you know, we still have a couple months to really put together what is, you know, here it is, this is where it's going to be type thing. We have already committed to what it's going to be. We just need to work out the details of where it's going to be. But again, I think based upon the state's preliminary analysis, they're inclined to make sure that we're able to bring something here if, you know, we can work something out.
Thank you, that was a very good presentation, Mr. Strange. I asked him if he would put together a presentation and present information to you as he moves forward in making his decision, then you will be able to have the right information when the time is right to make whatever decision the city has to make in respect to what you are trying to accomplish. And I will say this, in affordable housing, there is a need in the city. And if you just take time and drive around and look in some of the communities and you see what's there, you know that we do need to do something. And I appreciate your interest and would appreciate that you will keep us informed as you progress.
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Item number eleven. Resolution one-one-one-four-zero-eight, fiscal year twenty-twelve to twenty-thirteen aviation priority program. Brent Elton.
Good evening. Basically, this resolution that we're going to be submitting to the state is just updating them with our capital improvement plan, which is a listing of projects that we plan to do over the next five years. And what we've done really is, since our last submission to them, is added five years down the road doing an apron expansion. And that's likely to change, actually, once we get a little bit further down the road. We'll probably end up changing those plans a little. But everything else is currently the same. We'll be doing taxiway light rehabilitation, engineering this upcoming year, following year of the construction. The year after that, we'll be doing engineering on pavement improvements to the runway and taxiway. And then the year after that, we'll be doing construction phase of that. So basically, all this is just updating them with our, what we would like to do in the future. It's nothing that's set in concrete that we have to do.
Okay. You have any questions for Mr. Elton?
No questions.
No question. At this time, this is a resolution, I will entertain a motion on resolution one-one-one-four-zero-eight.
So moved.
Properly moved?
Second.
And second. Are there any questions, discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we have item number twelve, resolution one-one-one-four-zero-nine, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement and any amendments thereto with the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development for, to rehabilitate taxiway lighting phase one. Design Air Project Number Three-Two-Two-Zero-Zero-Zero-Four-Zero-One-Three-Twenty-Eleven for the Morehouse Memorial Airport. Mr. Elton?
And what this will do is, we'll be accepting the five percent matching funds from the state that they provide to complete the design phase on this project. I believe we've already accepted the ninety-five percent from the federal government to cover the design cost for the taxiway rehabilitation. So this is just us accepting the funding from the state for the additional five percent to complete the project.
At this time, I will entertain a motion on resolution one-one-one-four-zero-nine.
I make a motion, Mayor.
Properly moved?
I second.
And second. Are there any questions?
Mr. Elton, how long this procedure will take?
The engineering process should only take, I would guess, probably about six months to complete the engineering process. But then we'll wait till the next fiscal year to build up some of our entitlement funding to actually begin the construction phase. So that's why we're splitting the construction and engineering up is to make sure we've got enough entitlement money to cover the cost of the projects.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, Council, thank you.
Mr. Elton and I have talked about the Bastrop Airport and positioning ourselves for spillover from the Monroe Regional Airport. So we certainly have to look at opportunities for growth for this particular area. And I did attend the airport opening in Monroe, and I am so proud because that airport is going to help our whole region. Item number thirteen, ordinance one-one-four-two-zero-three, an ordinance of the City of Bastrop, Louisiana, to expand Chapter Twelve, the existing code of ordinance, to create Article Four groundwater protection and to enact sections of one-two-dash-three-zero-one through one-two-dash-three-zero-nine to create and establish a drinking water protection critical area around each water well or water source service as an action of public water systems or sources from contamination and to provide otherwise with respect thereto, Mr. Lawrence and Mr. Means. Would you like for Mr. Means to kind of introduce it, and then you will clarify any areas of?
Thank you, Mayor. If y'all recall, I came and talked to y'all, I guess it was two meetings ago, I believe, on it, and basically gave a ten- or fifteen-minute presentation about the wheres and whys and what the ordinance does. But just to reiterate the whole idea behind it, is to protect your water wells here in town. It's only for the public water systems, for the public water wells. And basically, what it does is it keeps any new potential sources of contamination, and there's a specific list of that in the ordinance itself, keeps any new ones from being built next to the water wells. So the whole idea is to keep chemicals away from it. We think it's important, basically, because it gives you a buffer between your water wells, and if something were to spill, it'll give you time to act appropriately. And especially here in town and in Morehouse Parish in general, at least up on top of the hill here. Basically, when something spills here locally, as far as chemical or whatever, there's straight sand down to where you get your water from, where the water table is. So it's really important, just geologically, just the way it's made up, as far as the way everything is put in in the ground here, to look at something like this. We're getting these things passed all across the state, both municipal and parish governments. In fact, the police jury is considering this exact ordinance right now as well. In addition to them, I think it's Oak Ridge and, is it Benita that's further up? Town of Benita, yes, ma'am. So if y'all pass it, you're not going to be the only ones. And I think the next closest place to y'all would be West Monroe. The mayor there was really proactive and very supportive of it. Of course, they've had a lot of water issues there with Esparta, but that's kind of the idea behind it. And I guess, unless y'all have anything else, that's all I had. Do y'all have any questions? Is that kind of what you're looking for, as far as just a rehashing of it?
Exactly. Do you have any questions for Mr. Means? Mr. Means did a presentation several weeks ago, and the most recent was about, was it a week ago? Was it this week, was it, because I had to be at the airport opening?
Last Thursday, we were here, we did a meeting, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
What that is, we've actually formed a group of people here locally to help do some things to protect the water systems, or the water wells, or really the groundwater in general. We're doing a lot of public education, that kind of stuff, public awareness issues. And can I advertise a little bit for myself? We're actually having another meeting, I think it's going to be at the Water System. It's the first Thursday of November, and everybody in the public's invited to come to it. But we're basically trying to do some different activities to help keep the water supplies protected. But, and this ordinance is just one of those things that we do on a routine basis. We just so happen to have Morehouse Parish as the place that we're working in right now. That's why we're here talking to y'all at this time.
Okay, Mr. Lawrence?
There are not much more to add, except for the fact that we're creating a brand-new section of the Code of Ordinances where this is going to fit. That's why you see the language about this being in Chapter Twelve, because it's brand-new. We're enacting this as a brand-new law. It also has a set of procedures in it. It contains a permitting process for exceptions that need to be made, and it allows you to make those decisions on a case-by-case basis, where something may be prohibited by this ordinance, but there may be good reason for making an exception. And all of that is addressed comprehensively in this ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, may I add one more thing?
Sure.
Kind of the way to look at it, it's putting the power in y'all's hands in this room as to what can and can't be put next to your water wells. So think about it like that, if that makes sense.
Having heard these presentations, at this time, I will entertain a motion on ordinance one-one-dash-four-two-zero-three.
I make a motion, Mayor.
Properly moved by Mr. Moore?
Second.
And second by Mr. Armstrong. Are there any questions, discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number fourteen, ordinance one-one-dash-four-two-zero-four, an ordinance of the mayor and board of aldermen of the City of Bastrop, Louisiana, granting to Atmos Energy Corporation, a Texas and Virginia corporation, with its principal office in the city of Dallas, Dallas County, Texas, and its successors, and assign the franchise and rights to conduct and search city the business of acquiring, maintaining, constructing, laying, repairing, removing, replacing, installing, operating, and disposing of a gas system for the sale, transportation, and distribution of natural gas within and beyond the municipal boundaries of the city and to the residents and beyond the municipal boundaries of the city and to the residents and businesses located therein for light, heat, power, and any other purposes, and the right to use the present and future streets, roads, highways, alleys, bridges, public ways, and immovable property in such city and owned or bridges and controlled by such city for such purposes, prescribing the terms and condition to which such franchise and rights are subject, prescribing the term of such franchise and rights, authorizing the mayor to execute all acts in the name of the city as are necessary and prudent, and to provide otherwise with respect thereto. Mr. Lawrence, will you point out the notes that we found to be necessary to add in this ordinance?
Yes, ma'am. The key thing that would be different from the first introduced provision would be in Section four-point-one-C. Four-point-one-C deals with the method that is used to audit the records of Atmos. That's a very important function in this case, because there's a franchise fee of two percent that the city receives. And there, this involves an accountability provision that will be inserted in subsection C to make certain that those records are available to the City of Bastrop. Other than that, we're talking about a five-year agreement, because right now, I think, Mayor, I think at this point, we're going month-to-month, or, in other words, the existing agreement is already expired.
It has.
We are required to have some type of agreement in place, because for the infrastructure that is used by the gas system that is currently in place, it's using the city's roads, public ways, easements, and everything else. And for that, and that can only be granted in a formal franchise agreement. So other than the provisions that deal with making sure in Section four-point-one-C that records are available to the city for audit purposes, to confirm the accuracy of those records in particular, this remains as-is, previously presented.
These were changes that we deemed were in favor of our responsibility as elected officials for the City of Bastrop. If clarity has been provided for you, at this time, I will entertain a motion on ordinance one-one-four-two-zero-four.
May I make a motion?
Properly moved by Mr. Johnson?
Second.
And second by Mr. Nation. Are there any questions, discussion, all in favor? Roll call.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Nation?
Yes.
Mr. Armstrong?
No.
Mr. Law?
Yes.
Mayor, it's quarter one.
All right.
In favor?
Thank you, Ms. Gold, and may the record reflect the vote. At this time, the motion carries based on the majority, with one dissenting vote. At this time, I will entertain a motion to expand the agenda to discuss Resolution one-one-one-four-one-zero and ordinance one-one-dash-one-one-dash-four-two-zero-five. So moved.
Second.
Properly moved and second. Are there any questions, discussion, all in favor? Motion carries. Resolution one-one-one-four-one-zero, a resolution of the mayor and board of all the persons of the City of Bastrop, Louisiana, to authorize the sale of a lot within the Colter Industrial Park to the owners of the Bastrop Tank Washing Facility at a price not less than what is their appraised value and in accordance with the other items, terms and items and condition legally applicable thereto, and further providing for the engagement of Christmas Realty for the professional appraisal services and the engagement of Philip Lester, attorney-at-law, for professional sale-closing services and granting authority to act in the name and stead of the city to convey legal ownership of said lot by sale and to perform such other acts in fulfillment of the sale that may be necessary and proper. Mr. Lawrence?
Yes, Mayor, I received a word from the city that the owners of Bastrop Tank Wash have an interest in purchasing an adjacent lot in the industrial park. And as a result of that, since the city is the owner of that land, there are a number of steps that you have to go through. The sale has to be for not less than the appraised value. Also- Also, you have to declare it surplus property, property that's no longer or that's not needed for some other use by the city. In addition to that, we need to establish appraised value, and we need to get legal counsel or title company involved to adequately and correctly convey title and ownership of that property to these prospective purchases. And so, this resolution does all of these things. And for that reason, if this council is so inclined to sell this property to the city, we would ask that you adopt this resolution authorizing all of these actions.
At this time, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion, Mayor.
Properly moved by Mr. Moore?
Second.
And second by Mr. Locke. Are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance number 114205, an ordinance to enact section 8-191 of the regulatory ordinance forming the criminal code of the City of Bastrop to prohibit the display, keeping, and/or transfer of ownership by sale or otherwise of animals in certain restricted areas of the city, to repeal all other sections of the Code of Ordinances that are inconsistent with said prohibition, and otherwise providing with respect thereto. Introduction, Mr. Douglas, Lawrence?
Yes, Mayor, you're correct. This ordinance is for introduction tonight. It comes in response to a request that this council received, I'm trying to remember if it was the last meeting at some point, dealing with the concern about the sale of animals on the side of roadways and in parking lots and everywhere else. And so, this is being introduced for your consideration on tonight, and of course, no final action can be taken until the next regularly scheduled meeting in November of 2011. If you have any questions, be glad to answer them. If you have any specific items that you want altered or inserted or whatever, we will entertain that as well for the final draft.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Lawrence? This is an item for introduction, it requires no action on your behalf tonight. Ms. Goldman, have we covered everything?
Yes, ma'am, I think so.
Okay, let us remember the events that are coming up, our local fair, that's the most anticipated event for the children and some adults, as we can get out to the fairgrounds and enjoy all of the snacks and our arts and crafts and our auction that's coming up Saturday, and certainly the police department retirement. We want to give those officers a good send-off tomorrow. Having conducted all of the business for tonight, at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
May I make that motion?
Second.
Properly moved and second, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you for attending.